I have six o'clock. I'd like to call the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three Village Board meeting to order. Trustee Bonnie, we can leave this in a minute.
.....................................................................
Thank you. Roll call please, Rachel. Trustee Bonnie?
Here.
Trustee Aaron?
Here.
Trustee Lundy?
Here.
Trustee Michaels?
Here.
Trustee Shomis?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
President Cohen?
Here. Thank you all. We have a forum this evening. Nothing under public hearing. Appointments of presentation. We have a presentation by Michelle Petrowski regarding the proposed TIP district drainage study. Michelle, thank you for coming. Thank you.
Getting to the first slide.
This is like watching at the end of the movie first.
It's in your mind. It's in your mind. So, thank you for letting me be here tonight, and I was asked to come, I think, as some of the questions that arose at the last meeting.
With that...
It's my understanding that S.B. Freedom Development Advisors had come in and given a presentation on the TIP. As such, this is one of the slides from their presentation, so just want to bridge the gap of how I got here. And they spoke about the TIP and TIP eligibility. What I'm here to talk about is the very point, there's one-factor test and two-factor test. I'm not an expert on the one-factor, two-factor, but looking at that one-factor test, one of the criteria was the area prior to its designation is subject to or contributes to chronic flooding. And after, so a few months ago, after the TIP consultant as well as legal consulted us to see if it qualifies under that criteria. So with that, if you go to the next slide, we went to state statute to see the exact wording because that seemed like it could be expanded upon. So with that, this is directly from the state statute. One of the criteria within the TIP is surface water that drain, surface water that discharges from all or part of the area and contributes to flooding within the same watershed, but only if redevelopment project provides for facilities or improvements to contribute to the alleviation of all or part of the flooding. So that's what we were really tasked with, does it? So if you go to the next slide, we did a very, we did a drainage study just to see if it complies. And the study area, the conclusions of that is that the study area currently contributes to downstream flooding with Zone X and Zone A E areas of Blackberry Creek and then the Fox River. So inherently, this property is draining to the Blackberry Creek, which ultimately ends up in the Fox River. As such, there's downstream flooded flood areas, and per what's in the state statute, it aligns with what's in the state statute. So that's our statement, that's what it says. It says it's basically in compliance with what it's intended to be with the flooding.
That being said, other conclusions, the future development in the proposed TIP district number three could result in additional downstream flooding. And with this, when they come in, they have to build detention ponds as well as have a controlled release rate. So that was the outcome of the study. It was a pretty short study, short and to the point. With that, take any questions?
Thank you, Michelle. Trustees, any questions?
Let me just clarify, Michelle, that at this time, you're only able to tell whether it contributes not, because we don't have any engineering plans yet that would tell us whether or not it would alleviate that. So our job as a board would be for us to, if this were to come forward as a TIP, to approve a plan, but only if it had measures in place for TIP purposes that would alleviate all or part of the flooding that's downstreaming or that this is contributory to.
Correct, which would involve detention and controlled release rates.
Okay, so it's not just a matter of them following the stormwater ordinance. They've got a stormwater ordinance, plus that also has to contribute to alleviating additional flooding downstream?
Consulted with legal. So the King County ordinance following that does, in fact, does qualify because they have to provide detention and they do have to control the release rate. So the King County stormwater ordinance satisfies this requirement.
It does, okay.
It's my understanding.
And they're obligated to follow that?
Yes.
I had a question. So all of their property would have qualified for this except for the high-dock portion, which then they did some stormwater mitigation. So otherwise, it would have been a hundred percent of their property?
Correct, we said only eighty-eight percent because of the high-dock rate.
All right. The other question I have is, other farmland surrounding this area without water detention would very possibly fall into the same category because it is uphill and does not have stormwater detention mitigation or stormwater mitigation?
Correct, as long as it would then provide...
Correct, or a part, I believe is how they, and how that part is defined is kind of gray. I have a problem with the intent of blightedness because this seems like it is stuck on a technicality in the greatness of the way the Act is written, the Tax Implement Allocation and Redevelopment Act. And by the way it is written, so much of our farmland property could qualify for this TIP, could qualify for a TIP under this one requirement, this one factor. So I have an issue with it even qualifying because I don't think it meets the intent of what blighted land is according to the Act. That's my two cents, that's what I have, all my research. But that's the fact that so much property could qualify just by the fact that it's farmland, water runs downhill.
It has the engineer, I was sticking to the facts.
Yep, no, no problem, yep.
You can go with the intent, I'll let you know that discussion.
Intent is kind of a gray area, it looks like, because whether purposely or not, the Act is a little gray in what the intent is. And that's for, I guess, municipalities to decide upon themselves.
Thank you, Heidi. Any other questions?
So I think Jamie's comment, what we really want to look at is when the plan is set up and engineering is doing their water study and laying out how the retention ponds and drainage is going to be, that's really the investigation that we need to be looking at to make sure that, I guess, by the statute or at least as evidenced here, it's not only providing storage for its own drainage, but also alleviating, i.e. creating, and I read that as an engineer, creating backflow, in essence, added drainage for the other areas as well downstream, as supported by that. So, yeah, there's not a lot to, it's not a question, it's a statement, there's not a lot to see here until we see the engineering plan ultimately, you know, with the developer's proposal as far as water drainage in the area.
Scott?
So I would just say one thing with that, so there's really two things with that part of the law. One is in dealing with the eligibility specifically, which is what the study and the S.B. Freedom Report is about, is there, does it contribute downstream? Yes, then the TIP can be created. Part two is when you do enter into an agreement or redevelopment agreement, or there is development there, then it is obligation from the village to require them to fix that. So it's two different things from the law, but with the eligibility, that part, it's there and it's evident. We have to have them do that later, but that's, it's just kind of two parts of that, sort of, for that.
Thank you. Any other questions or, well, we have Michelle here relative to the eligibility component? No? Thank you, Michelle, for coming.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. Up next, we have airport report, Tony.
The reason we need a copy is that little presentation, we should have emailed.
Yeah, was it in, yeah, I think it was in S.B. Freedom. Okay, but we'll get it.
The E.I. report is on our website under the Sugar Grove LLC Development page. I'll go ahead and add the presentation that Michelle did tonight to that page as well and email it out to the trustees.
Thank you, Scott. Tony?
Good evening. The airport municipal advisory board meeting was last week. Not a lot was discussed other than Andy Fayetteville, who was working on a hangar out there. It's just west of the entrance there by some that remember what was called the BP Hangar. He started some of his development, he soil testing, septic testing, and soil boardings to move forward with the improvements that he was making. I reported on it like two months ago, that Aurora was looking for some proposals and this was one that was moving forward. Also, they were working on surveying for their solar farm, and we ran into an issue the village did that we had to discuss with the airport. And Aurora, they mislabeled what they were surveying for. For some reason, they labeled it water main and gas main, but it was all about the solar farm and electric wires that they were running. So we got that clarified as well. So I have no other report at this time.
Can you tell me, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have public comment on items scheduled for action. Just give me one moment to run through those items. On tonight's consent agenda, A, approval of the minutes from the December fifth, twenty twenty-three Village Board meeting. B, approval of the vouchers. C, approval of the treasurer's report. D, an ordinance, a minimum human resources manual for the Village of Sugar Grove, King County, Illinois. E, an ordinance, adopting a paid leave policy, Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act, Village of Sugar Grove, King County, Illinois. A, a resolution authorizing purchase of a Bobcat rough cut mower from Atlas Bobcat. G, a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with All Traffic Solutions, Inc., for InstaAlert portable variable message boards and miscellaneous equipment. H, a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with France Strategies LLC for communication services. Under general business this evening, we have A, acceptance of the police pension twenty twenty-three municipal compliance report. And B, a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Applied Concepts, Stalker Radar, or an MC three sixty message trailer and miscellaneous equipment. So any public comments on any of those specific items for action? I will go through the list. If you would like to make a public comment on those, you are free to come to the podium. Nora London? No, okay. I can't totally read this. Last name is Slavens? First name, maybe Carmen? No? Okay, Cody? No, okay, Larry Jones?
No.
That's Ball? Okay. Kim T? Okay, and Harry?
None of those.
Okay, thank you. And any requests to remove an item from consent? Oh, sorry. With that being said, any comments whatsoever from anybody that's not on our list? Going once, going twice, three times, I'll close that portion, okay. Consent agenda, any requests to remove an item? Hearing now, can I get a motion to approve as previously stated?
Estated.
Thank you.
Estated.
I have a first trustee Shomis and a second trustee White. Roll call please, Rachel. Trustee Shomis?
Aye.
Trustee White?
Aye.
Trustee Bonnie?
Aye.
Trustee Aaron?
Aye.
Trustee Lundy?
Aye.
Trustee Michaels?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes six zero. Up next, general business, acceptance of the police pension twenty twenty-three municipal compliance report. Ma'am.
All right, so this is probably the first time the board has seen this type of report. We get this annually. Generally, the timing doesn't work out, but due to consolidation, we are getting this earlier now with the requirement for the actuary to be completed. So what this is, is basically just an acceptance for the village boards. We have already approved our tax levy, there is nothing to do. The report basically breaks down the absence of liability of the police pension fund, but it also breaks down what the required contribution is for that pension fund, the minimum contribution. So the state, what this report is going to tell you is the state is required to give over a contribution level of projected unit credit ninety percent, which basically means you're ninety percent funded by twenty forty. Then you're also able to go get a private actuary that tells you all the additional information. Essentially, the state will not tell you what a hundred percent funding is. You have to go get that on a private, through a private actuary. What it also does is, the private actuary will give you the gasby sixty-seven and sixty-eight reporting requirements, which are required in a year to audit, that the state does not also provide. So while they're doing basically double work, the village has to go get these because we need those for the audit. But what the village also does is wants a hundred percent funding level to know what that number is rather than the ninety percent. So the village goes and we engage Lauderbach and Amon to do that, they give all those reporting requirements, but they also give us the hundred percent funding number. The Lauderbach and Amon hundred percent funding number, as you can see in the report, shows you that it is five hundred and seventy-five thousand eight eighty-four. That's, that is the required statutory minimum, which is also the ninety percent. But that is because that's what they're required to provide to us, the IPOPIF, which is the downstate pension. Minimum required is five hundred and eighty-seven thousand nine thirty-one. So that is the request from the pension fund to the village is the five hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Now, the board approved the tax levy at the last meeting at six hundred and sixty-six thousand. So we are going to be overfunding it. And that was that discussion regarding the such large change in rate of return that we didn't want to have such a drop, but also to kind of smooth out the change in staffing levels with the vacancies that the police department has, that we are missing people, so the actuary doesn't kind of take into account those. So we didn't want to have a huge drop because we could, we wanted to keep that level up in case that comes back up. So the village is funding at six hundred and sixty-six thousand for next year. This report will come to the board every year now, just as an acceptance of the resolution. It's been provided to the village as information and as a requirement of the police pension fund to provide that. So this is more informational than just an acceptance of the board accepting the requirement.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you for explaining that, obviously, and all your information. Any trustee comments?
How is the investment going with the combine?
The first year was slow, but they are starting to see larger and the more expected rates of return that they were expecting from the actual settlement. So they are, I think they hit the six point eight, that's the rate of return of the lease fund. The program was six point eight, I believe they hit it or were just below it for the year. So the first year, they did lose money because there were such a large expense in the beginning to create it. But now they're starting to see that and the loans that were taken out have been paid off by the pension funds. So there's no more expense for that creation, so you're starting to see the higher returns.
Thank you. Yeah, that's where my comment was going to be because I've, you know, read in the press and those sorts of things, that those are the target numbers. But I'm seeing our annual rates of return over the last two years, as noted in paragraph four, page nine, at negative eight point two percent for last year and about three percent for this year. What's the delta there as far as the six point eight versus?
That's all of the expense for the loans because this is based on equal three of the twenty-three numbers. So going forward, like as of right now, they're hitting those. So this is as of last year, which we were really only one year into that program.
All right.
Because we didn't, the police pension fund for Sugar Grove did not transfer until June twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
So that whole first year that it was in was this year that we're presenting as the actual.
Okay.
So that had the whole expense of the creation of the fund. And we know how the market happened two years ago.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know. From my time helping that out, I know that was always a concern that I had. You know, the projected rates are based on higher percentages in the stock market than we were allowed to do. We had such a huge amount that was stuck with bonds that had a lower rate of return. Six percent was never going to be realistic in those sorts of areas. Yes, we did very well on the areas that we had a little more control over in the stocks. We always did really, really well. But, you know, the bonds are bonds. It is what it is.
Since you've been on, where we have gotten over that threshold, so we are able to invest in the different, we went over that five million dollar threshold. That allows you to go into the better, and now with consolidation, everybody is.
Okay, all right.
And then you had a lot of fixed expenses too, the actuaries that... Obviously.
Well, interestingly enough though, they're passing that back now, it sounds like. So I think it's all going to be moved and if...
There is...
Someone's going to do a look-back study and find out that this didn't save anyone.
There is amendments out there for the actuary portion to require the consolidated fund actuaries to provide the necessary information that villages need. I don't know if it will come any further.
Any other comments or questions?
Are they moved to accept the report?
Thank you.
I'll say.
Thank you, I have the first trustee White and the second trustee Shomis. Roll call please. Trustee White?
Aye.
Trustee Shomis?
Aye.
Trustee Bonnie?
Aye.
Trustee Aaron?
Aye.
Trustee Lundy?
Aye.
Trustee Michaels?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes six zero. Up next, a resolution authorizing execution of the agreements of Applied Concepts. Chief?
Thank you. Just as a reminder, at the last board meeting, finance director, Anastasia, presented the six-month budget review. And part of that included budget surplus. Within that, we had some requests from each of the departments, or maybe some of the departments who reported items that were in the initial budget, but we were waiting on to see how the fund was going to look. The village being conservative in their fiscal responsibility, held off a couple of the items that were requested at the budget time. And I know this is one item that had some questions at the end, since the village already owns two message boards that are stored at Public Works. Had an opportunity to speak with Public Works Director Brad Merkel about it. And I know one of the items that, the questions that wanted to come up was the statistics for the actual use of the message boards. And just for tracking purposes, that's not something that typically they have written down or covered. And I know Brad is here as well. But he does know that, you know, Brad, if you might speak on the use of the boards and then...
Is this board different? Is this board slightly different?
Yes.
Sorry, go ahead.
Chief, you can speak, but the board has a radar corporate. Ours are just portable message boards. Sometimes we can fly them for a week at a time, a day at a time, or hours. There's the time which we could use if we had to tie it up, you know.
So is this one specific to the police department though? Is this one going to be stored here?
It wouldn't, but it'd be used for anyone within the village that needed it. So it would be an additional opportunity for anyone to use it within the village. So if the two were already tied up and they needed it, they could put their message out as well on, so.
But if we're not going to, is this one that we're going to hold back for our own emergency that might happen versus the other two sometimes going Montgomery or wherever they might go? Is this one going to stay in the...
This one, I would hope so, but there may be a rare circumstance where they may need to get to another community, you know, where we'll get, how that would affect us operationally, for how long, for a period, I don't want to say, no, we don't want to loan it out, but, because we borrow things from other communities as well, so.
Understood. Any questions for chief or Brad on this one?
This one had the, I'm sorry, I...
Oh, I was trying to say, so this one does have the solar, is that correct? Does it have power?
It is, it is built in solar, so yes, as long as the sun is shining, it should keep it charged and we don't have to plug it in. Probably go a couple of months. Brad, do you know how long yours currently?
It lasts a couple of days when you have the time.
Yeah.
Unless it's the sun, they, the others are solar as well.
These have the, it says there's an optional LPR.
It does, it...
Get it with that?
No. So it does not, we're not, we're not looking to add the other module, which is a license plate reader, onto this device. And if the, you know, we're hoping with the devices that we have and the type of ones that we hopefully will have up soon, get tested out and once we have in the squad cars, we'll keep, you know, keep it safe.
Thank you. Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve as previously stated?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Good. My first trustee Michaels and the second trustee Aaron, roll call please. Trustee Michaels?
Aye.
Trustee Aaron?
Aye.
Trustee Bonnie?
Aye.
Trustee Lundy?
Aye.
Trustee Shomis?
Aye.
Trustee White?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes six zero. Up next, we have public comments, is any and all comments on any, we have nothing under discussion this evening. So I'll start back at the top, Aurora, do you want to make a public comment? If you do, it's three minutes, it's on our screen and you, mine standard, please. Thank you, ma'am.
I've been a resident for about ten years, and I've been through a number of these things on the TIP. And one thing I wanted to comment to on the information presented to us that I have concern about is that the development of that land may increase the flooding despite the improvements that are made based on the amount of ground that's going to be covered with concrete and asphalt. I have dealt with numbers of industrial properties in my career. My background is fire and property loss control, I deal with flood evaluations as well. And I have seen the need for huge retention ponds based on the amount of ground they cover. So I wanted to make sure that it was noted that there would be a potential issue on this. And with the farmland, as Heidi had pointed out, further up, this limits the amount of ground to absorb the water. I know in a number of the developed areas in this greater Chicagoland, we have significant issues with rainwater runoff because all we have is concrete. And the water does not have any place else to go for those drains. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Again, I'm sorry, is it Cameron? No, Carmen? Slavens? Nothing, okay. Cody? No, okay. Larry Jones?
I am here as a resident of Sugar Grove. My statements are strictly mine, even though I believe others share my views. I represent no one but me. In two thousand nine, Shawn Michaels welcomed me into this community. I have appreciated his sincere greetings at every time we meet. His love for this community is very evident. I appreciate his years' public service. I call him a friend. Public service is often petty and unforgiving. An elected official who commits an illegal act of violation of law tarnishes all who serve with him, especially on the same board. Shawn Michaels' actions have tarnished the village, government. The crime was against procedures and rules put in place to protect the residents. The reason for the crime was monetary. Shall we infer that our safety is for sale? The reasons for the crime was monetary. Trustee Michaels admitted violating another municipality's safety standards by forgery and fraud. Why not here too? The plea bargain or agreement that Shawn has agreed to is common in such cases of this. But are other unconvicted felons formerly Sugar Grove residents, are they sending trust... Are they sitting trustees of Sugar Grove? Sugar Grove must set the code of conduct, not criminal proceedings that are highly suspect and lacking integrity. This is not about one man doing wrong. It's about a trustee's credibility, your credibility. Failure of the board to address it leaves the appearance that his conduct is acceptable, just doing business as usual. The village is under tremendous scrutiny by forces trying to influence our community's opinion of elected officials, appointed officials, uh, procedures, pro- processes, influences and goals. Many see the action of monetary gain and trustees betrayal to be that greatest evidence. The blight on the board confirms such accusations in many residence files. I implore the trustees to establish your ability to maintain the highest possible standard of self-discipline. I ask that you make it a public policy to hold each other accountable to a code of ethics that we, the people, can admire. Addressing this injustice will demonstrate to your constituents that you can be trusted, admired, respected. And we can have confidence that our trustees have our backs. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Up next, Beth Ball.
Um, I'm just gonna, I've gone over and over with all this blighted this and what you guys discussed today in regards to the flood. I'm very glad that Heidi brought up the fact that the entire area around here is farmland. And it all would be blighted. And I have not seen that, if you look at the, the area that we live in, it, it doesn't feel blighted to me. Um, I don't know if anybody here has been brought up by farmers or have lived on a farmland. I don't think that you ever felt your land was the garbage that they're trying to portray when you say that it is a blighted land and that somebody should get a TIF because water didn't go fast enough to the creek. 'Cause I live where you're telling where the water's gonna be going, so I know that my, my street has flooded and my kids did take a canoe out there and had a great time, but I'm just saying that I don't consider my area blighted and I don't consider the farmland blighted here. If you look at the soil that is here, it is black soil and it is very productive and it's been going on for hundreds of years. I think that y'all should take a look when you're voting for this TIF. If you really feel that you, this land is something that, um, you could consider as a being blighted. I, I don't see it. It isn't an inner city lot that is useless and, you know, falling apart. That is not what we're, we're living with. I mean, even if you live in Hanford Farms, when you're looking towards the, uh, pumpkin farms, you're not looking at a blighted area. You're looking at a place that is growing things that you guys bring home and put on your front porch. So, I mean, I really hope you think about this when you take your vote. I really do. I mean, you're, the TIF is not going to make it a good place to live. If you weren't grounded to build here, that's fine, but they should pay just like everybody else here does. Otherwise, we'll all be paying for their, their work. I'm done.
Uh, Kim T.
Hey, good evening. Hello.
Hello.
First of all, happy holidays to all of you. I really appreciate you guys are hardworking and trying to work for the residents here, not for yourself. I want to, uh, catch up where I left off, uh, two months ago. Last time I, uh, talked about my personal experience with the stereogenic, uh, real book. They're leaking ethylene oxide that, uh, causing a lot of death and cancer. Uh, I was the real last couple of months, uh, to help my patients who live around Brighton Park of in Chicago. Then I had a privilege to, uh, have my media friend to dig up the freedom in, of innovation act of environmental study of that park. And found that they were, uh, cancer causing, uh, what is it? Uh, D E H P, the chemical that, uh, potentially causing real cancer. So, so I proposed to the mayor that, uh, why not put the migrants in the, uh, vacant hotels, the hotels or vacant buildings and ended up, we ended up doing that because the governor shut down the migrant tent uh, in Brighton Park. So what I use analogy for this, uh, program here in the Sugar Grove development. That the Crown Development make a good proposal that I, I, I like that economic development for all the areas in the next step. I think if you take out, if you take out the, the warehouse, uh, part by replacing it with a uh, healthcare model such as.
St. Jules.
St. Jules, uh, uh, children's research hospital that out on Memphis.
There's a great need.
There's a great need of pediatric hospital in the area. So that would leave a legacy for the president, Karen. That in the future, you know, there's a big, uh, children's hospital in Sugar Grove that you put a sugar drop in the world map. That pediatric hospital, big need, they could find, uh, all the disability from all the child in the world to come here for the treatment. So, uh, pediatric hospital, they do not need TIF. They have their self-sustain. They could, they could operate without a TIF. So, so in other words, no TIF, no warehouses. Thank you so much. I'll catch up next time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Period.
Regarding the TIF, uh, this recent study, uh, I guess I'm in here. I've also wrote the statute and from what I read, and it's all a matter of interpretation with a lot of gray area. But from what I read, it says that the land to qualify for blighted condition has to be subs- all or substantially all of the property that you're putting into the TIF has to be flooded, not the drainage. The, the drainage, I mean, my house qualifies for a TIF. Maybe I can apply for a TIF to remodel and put in some new things. I don't know, but, but we are in a river basin. Water runs downhill and I think everybody has to use your common sense and your judgment and your gut and look into the intent truly of the TIF versus the benefits that we're gonna see. The other intent of it is to bring jobs, qualified jobs and, and substantial benefits through income and monetary benefits into the, the, uh, community here. Because of this, the situation of the TIF being a separate boundary, there's no benefit to the proper boundaries of Sugar Grove at this time. There's no blighted buildings that we can benefit through taking down, cleaning up something new that's gonna help our community. This is all for Crown and they can receive up to one hundred percent return or TIF funds to cover for this project, to, to pay for the project, so they're not putting out, they could be, they're not putting out one dime. There's something morally wrong with that, especially with the background of, of the real credentials of what this TIF is. There's some other issues with the TIF as well. Um, there's a continuity issue with the public, uh, uh, land or the lines going down through there for the power lines. There was a, a Supreme Court hand down in Illinois with that school district filed a suit and, and said that the, the, uh, continuity was broken because of this and they won. The TIF was defeated. I've got all this information and I'd like to share it with you so at least you can make a better judgment. And you're gonna hear things on the other side. It's all interpretation. I understand that. But you have to know all of the facts and I just have, you know, like I said, back in November, my first visit here. I, I cannot square up financially what the two benefits are gonna be to give up three hundred and fifty million dollars potentially in TIF funds, even though it runs for twenty-three years. We're required to spend that money within the TIF district with few exceptions. I don't know what the hell we're gonna spend it on. The only thing we can get is from release of those funds and we get four point six six percent for Sugar Grove. My phone. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? Oh, sorry. Dale, you'll go next.
Well, I wanted to be last. The only reason I wanted to be last is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can you, can you just restart? Can you state your name for the record?
Yeah, my name's Tim Slamens. Twenty-nine year resident of Sugar Grove. My grandma moved here forty-five years ago. I married my high school sweetheart and we decided to move west, so we moved from West Aurora to Sugar Grove. Why does everybody love Sugar Grove? 'Cause we're in the country. I'd say forty-seven is a blighted line pretty much. Everything east of us is warehouses, houses, businesses, everything. That's why we like it out here. My grandmother moved out here and now there's five different Slamens households in the Sugar Grove area. First of all, you guys, all public, board members, servants of police, of the utmost respect. I know you get nothing but grief and probably very few pats on the back. But my biggest problem with this is the TIF. I'm currently building three houses on a forty acre property that I bought twenty years ago. And if I wanna do that, they're gonna make me do a study on the water runoff. And most likely make me do a pond. It costs me around two hundred thousand dollars is what King County's estimating. Do I get a TIF for that? In the last three years, I spent a million dollars on warehouses in the Heartland, uh, condo association and did two hundred thousand dollars improvements for my small business. Do I get a TIF for that? I just want you guys to know how hard it is to come up here and stand and say, I, I could be wrong, but is there anybody in the audience for the TIF? Raise your hand if you are for the TIF, for this plan. Now, only four or five of us are gonna stand up here 'cause it's hard. I didn't even plan on speaking tonight. My wife told me not to speak and my son told me not to speak. And then my final question is, who paid for the EEI report? Was that the village or was that Crown?
I'll answer you after public comments. We'll answer your questions after public comment.
And then my question for everybody is, who should decide whether or not we give them this TIF? Should it be a trustees of seven people or should it be the residents of Sugar Grove? You know, when they wanna raise the taxes a small percentage from the school district or any other thing, they put it to a vote. And I just, I would hate to be in your shoes and have to make this decision myself. I will put it out to the public, to the people. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes, Dale.
My name is Dale Essling. Last meeting, Destiny Freeman made their, uh, presentation and I came up there and read the statement that was laughable. EEI presentation tonight was the exclamation point to that. According to EEI, uh, engineering firm, if a farm field gets rained on and the water from that rain runs downhill, the farm field is blighted. That farm field gets a TIF. So yes, sir, apply for a TIF. Your, your land is blighted. You should get a TIF for that. You can build on that. Good luck, people. This is, this property, you've already been told by a lawyer it doesn't qualify for a TIF, so good luck.
Thank you, Dale. Any other public comments at this time?
Hi.
Helen.
So I've been coming here, you need to know, there's no mayor.
Rick boy.
Yeah, you guys. Um, far too often, this is not how I'm supposed to do these day evenings, I mean. But, but I, I come 'cause I, I feel pretty strongly about this. Um, some of the things that I've heard in these meetings are really kinda like heartwarming, you know what I mean? We have little Halloween decorating contests and we need judges to do that. And we're gonna have a beautification committee and we're gonna make the village look really nice. Then I hear other things about like, if you park your car the wrong way on the street, we're gonna give you a citation 'cause we just don't stand for that kinda stuff in Sugar Grove. We wanna keep it a neat and tidy place, right? Kinda has that Mayberry feel to it. It, it should have that. And these are all really, really nice things. And then I hear other things, like what I heard tonight, about chronic flooding on this land. Now, I watch the news and floods make the news. And I see roads being washed away and I see cars floating and there was a flood in Chicago last summer or like that. And so I look up the word flooding. The covering is emerging with normally dry land with a large amount of water. I don't see that out here. I've been here for six years and I've never seen that. And then chronic, I looked up chronic, 'cause that was the other one. And chronic is like occurs with regular, uh, regular occurrences. I, 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 like, I hear these words and it kinda defies logic. That we're accepting these definitions, that this is chronically flooding land. The Fox River is so empty that we can't even go kayaking anymore. Like, we don't even use it for, for recreation, 'cause there's not been any water there for the past couple of years. I, I just don't understand how you can justify the juxtaposition of what the village is and what it really ought to be and with where all of this is going. And so I know that by honesty, ethics, integrity, these are important, important things. And I don't know how anybody can drive around this area and look at that property up there and think that that is not pristine, productive farmland that's been, being labeled as blank dirt and blighted land due to chronic flooding. It just doesn't square. Thanks.
Thank you. Dale.
Hello, everyone. And then on lighter note, I just want to send out an appeal, if you wanna call it that. Uh, the corn boil is still in desperate need of help with the, uh, we need someone to head the corn committee, facilities and sponsorship. So if anyone's interested, uh, the next board meeting is the third Thursday in January, which I think is the nineteenth, at the fire department. So if anyone on the board is interested in volunteering or if you have friends that wanna volunteer, we, uh, we really need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? Going once, going twice, three times, we will close that. Nothing under discussion?
Pardon me, I, I'd like to make a call.
You bet.
You know, um, I, I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Slamens, about how hard it is to come in here and do that. I've been at these board meetings for the last twelve, three years, usually sitting out there. And, and I, and I appreciate the respect that you've brought to this. I just wanna say, and I don't know anybody on this board who disagree with that, but nobody here wants to do something that's not gonna benefit Sugar Grove. If Crown comes forward with a plan that doesn't benefit the village, in our opinion, then we're not gonna approve it. If they come forward with a plan that we think is gonna benefit the village. And we haven't seen it yet, so we don't know that yet. So we really haven't been able to comment on that yet. But I just, I think it's important for everybody to know that, you know, we do care about this village. That's why we run for this position and that's why we wanna be in this position to help the village. the village. But I think that something that you all have to realize is that we're not going to approve something that isn't going to benefit us. And so I just wanted to make that comment because there's been so many weeks and weeks and weeks of back and forth with comments and, you know, when this is all done, we're still going to have to be a village together. And, you know, I just want you guys to know that if we don't think it's going to be beneficial, then we're not going to approve it. I think it's as simple as that.
Thank you, Jamie Wilson. Steph, please.
Scott? Thank you. I wanted to address the question about who paid for the EEI study. So they were contracted as by the village, just like S.B. Freeman was, but it's paid for from an escrow account that is funded by the applicant. It is commonplace for application for anybody that comes forward, so that would be Crown Community Development. Matt can correct me if I'm wrong and he can provide extra details if the trustees have any questions about how that process works, but that's very commonplace for us when we go through, we pass through a lot of engineering costs, we pass through studies, other costs that we have when there are services that the village itself can't provide and we have to use outside consultants. I also just wanted to mention a little bit about EEI being a valued community member that I have the utmost respect for and their professionalism. And they were asked to do a very, very specific thing and look at, does this thing that it says in the act, does this happen? They're not commenting specifically on anything else with the land in that respect, so I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that and how much we value them as a team member and all the great things and them being part of our Sugar Grove community. I wanted to bring that up as well and that it's a very specific linear thing they were asked to look at and they delivered that, so I wanted to mention that as well. And thank Michelle for coming out and answering questions for the trustees tonight. My report's in the packet and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Just for the record, under Sugar Grove LLC, in your board report, it says you're hoping to receive or staff hopes to receive formal application in December, so I don't know if you want to comment on that.
Yeah, that's very likely to happen. We continue discussions and working towards the goal to make sure that everything is applied for appropriately, that you have questions for us as would any developer that comes forward and they're working with staff. We don't expect with, you know, December almost coming to a close that they will be applying in December and that's a, sorry, that was from last time, we're still hoping that would happen, so it looks like that the application is going to come in the new year when they're fully ready to apply. They have had a pre-application meeting with the community development staff, which is just part of the process that we have, but they're not ready at this point.
Thank you. Any questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott. Matt?
Nothing additional. I just wanted to point out on his staff report for the Irma Body One Camera Grant that was awarded, we did receive another grant last year, I believe, in roughly the same amount, which helped us push this forward in front of the state mandate of year of 2025. And I just want to say thank you to you and to staff for always looking for grant opportunities. And we did have a good six-month, you know, budget, but it also helps when staff is constantly looking for opportunities. You want to?
Something ringing in the remote.
Oh, someone ringing the remote, okay. Does anybody have any questions for Matt? Thank you. Walter?
Just want to follow you a very good thing. Merry Christmas and happy new year. I hope that's good.
Thank you, Walter. Any other questions for Walter?
I was gonna say, I thought I saw some more show that they moved into the 117.
Good. All good. If nothing further, Chief?
Just wanted to add a nice email that I received was carbon copied out and it came from the school district and this specifically came from Jackie Bogdan, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Business. And last week she sent this email out to Officer Tayley, who's our School Resource Officer, as well as some other individuals, but I think it's important for you guys to hear it as well because of your efforts, there's some genuine relationships that are being built as well as the opportunities for us to be influential with folks in the school district. So if you just give me a few minutes here, it says, last night there was a community advisory committee meeting held at the King High School. The CAC membership is composed of parents throughout the district who have children attending various schools from many of our different communities. One of the intended items I shared sounded around safety and security in the district. I had the intention of sharing the addition of a school resource officer and the traffic control at Harder Middle School. Received positive feedback about these additions and specifically about your relationships with staff, students, and the community at Harder. And then it goes on to say, Mr. Stock, a Sugar Grove resident and parent who has two out of three students at the middle school, shared that his two students have come home and shared how much they like having you in the building. This is directed towards the written for Officer Tayley. They both worried about your participation in the recent gym class units on roller skating. Mr. Stock shared how much you appreciated your building relationships and connections with kids that came in Harder Middle School and how important it is for the community. They were echoed by other parents at last night's meeting and I wanted to make sure you, thank you for making connections with the kids, parents, and staff. And I just wanted to say thank you because I think this is important for all of us because this has been something that's been unsure, we know I just didn't have the resources for someone in the school, but I appreciate the board's action by allowing us to be School Resource Officer in the school. And we will revise our little report later on, maybe next year, about what's been happening at the middle school and be happy to bring the School Resource Officer back for a presentation. And also, speaking of the School Resource Officer, he completed his 40-hour class last week, so he's officially served by the School Resource Officer. So we're in compliance and he used to take that test every couple of years, or not a test, he used to take some classes every couple of years, so, but thank you. And this is, you know, this warms all of us and I know he's doing a great job out there and, but he's also still being a police officer too. So even though he's made some positive impact, he's still making sure that, you know, kids understand his role. So, but thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
And for those that don't know, his participation with the roller skating unit, he brought in his speedo and was trying to see who could skate the fastest. I believe a middle school student that was 26 or 28 miles an hour. They're moving. They're moving. But they absolutely, absolutely loved that.
That's awesome. It sounds like he's building great relationships out there.
Yeah.
Oh, that's fun. Thank you. That is a good story this time of year to have. Any questions for Chief? No? Moving along? Thank you. Any questions for Brad?
Try to find room for more salt. I don't know. Just. Take it. Yeah. It's a good pleasure for the next two weeks.
Yep. How's the ice skating, Rick? Yeah, it's good. Get your speedos out. All right. Michael?
Thank you. So to make you know, I represent the village and I'm one of the directors of the library. We were here last week to help your home board meeting and also your annual board luncheon. What they're doing is to ensure that Sugar Grove is properly included in digital or print marketing that they do, including their annual visitor guide, or providing them with updated photographs for those platforms. And also that with the person and their staff who organizes the organization tours, also typically by CBI to bring people out to tour communities and attractions, make sure they're on their radar, and also to make sure that all of our restaurants, we have our attractions, our events are included in these platforms and one of the ones we've got listed recently added was the growing farm. So enjoying the work, this work and the service on other boards to improve and so I want to keep it up to date and pack holidays.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions for Michael? Hearing them? Trustee reports. Trustee Michael?
Phil Keck, he was a lifetime resident of Sugar Grove. He passed away. They had a wake for him tonight, but I don't think he moved more across the street from one house to the other and his dad had run the tech store, so he'll be missed in the hearing. In the obituary, they listed a number of his volunteer contributions, but I do believe he was a trustee for Sugar Grove and was not listed, so. But that's it.
Okay, thank you. Trustee White?
Well, I just attended the grand opening of Primo's, which was very good. They had some free food and it was very good. Everyone's guys couldn't make it, they had to eat more of it. No, we do encourage people to try it out. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Trustee Ling?
I just wanted to echo a little bit what Mr. Masters said. I have worked with a lot of engineers in what I've done over the years and I have nothing but the utmost respect for EEI and their quality of work.
Thank you, Michael. Trustee Harris?
Nothing new to report. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and see you in the new year.
So are you officially on break after tomorrow as well or?
Yeah. I had a scheduled meeting with the state's attorney yesterday that, for just some services that they provide, and I was not made aware that, don't schedule anything the week before winter break or April in a middle school and when you're the dean of students. And they, yeah, it has been pretty busy. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to the reunion.
Well deserved. Trustee Vatty?
Nothing, this evening.
Thank you. Trustee Shamos?
The Park District, I've had to miss the last couple of meetings in person, but I followed up with Scott after all and gotten a synopsis on the stuff. I think the biggest piece of information that's happened was with respect to their tax levy. They suspect that their overall tax rate will probably end up staying neutral to slightly down a point, as much as 0.5% or whatever it's worth when it's all said and done based on their estimated budget going into next year. Other information, of course, is available on their website. Similar to what the forest preserve, but I guess the big item there as far as their levy discussions is that they have taken advantage of the full 5% CPI in their levy. Tell by the numbers that that's not a surprise. And I'm still looking forward to seeing opportunities to get an ROI out of that as far as our local community is concerned. Again, without digging into details, I guess to keep it a little short and more brief, the details, they do provide a lot of information on their website regarding the agenda and the detailed topics that are being discussed there, so. Let's inform I.
Thank you. Under President's report this evening, I do have to report that I did receive a resignation from Planning Commissioner Jim Eckert. So I have accepted his resignation. We will be posting in the new year and looking for applications to fill that spot. The holiday party for our staff went extremely well, so I know a lot of you are working during the day and can't make it, but overall it was a heartfelt time. Jamie, thank you. I know you were there with me and I think staff had a great time. I can't say it enough, I try to say it all the time, but we do appreciate everything that you do for us as a board, but us as residents and all the folks that live here, so thank you. And I also have to thank you for attending Primo's. So it was my first one, it kind of died next, but I was out of commission for about a week, so unfortunately I was sick and under the weather, but thank you for making them feel warm and welcome in Sugar Grove in my absence. That's all I have. I wish all of you a happy, safe holiday season. Scott's got something to add.
Yeah, I wanted to thank President Conan for myself and from all the staff for the holiday party. You know, she puts a ton of time in, is very thoughtful by using some of our credit card points to get some gifts and have a raffle to bring some of the people there. It's a great opportunity to get to talk to some staff members that may work odd shifts that came to bring everybody together and it was a really great event and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
What would you do, Jerry?
Thank you. Second? The first had a trustee White and his second had trustee Harris for coffee.